This conference will now be recorded.
That was the other thing I needed to do. Okay. So with that, Marty, I'll turn it over to you. Before we get started, I just want to thank you for all your hard work and putting this together. I know it's been, you've been at it for a while with city staff and it's pretty exciting. So a lot of numbers, but I really appreciate everything that Marty, thank you.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Just a little bit of backdrop, you saw me, I think, a year ago. I believe it was when I presented a report to the council and the mayor. And from that, we started working on some of the building and planning fees, engineering fees, with the healthier staff and Mr. Swanson. We had quite a year because of COVID, so we had some interruptions during our time. Worked a little bit with Paul Lewis as well to get some numbers from the city. So I'm going to walk through, I'm going to walk through a slide deck. I think Jeff can pull up the PowerPoint. So what's before the council tonight is a proposed building fee table that will be adopted in the city code. And I wanted to kind of walk through how, could you go to the first slide in the slide deck, please? So I wanted to give the mayor and city council just a high level look at how building permit fees are calculated. And there are really kind of three components of a building fee. I'll give you some examples. And then the other document that I'll walk through is an explanation of the International Code Council valuation table. And then this, what we're proposing is a new building fee table. So next slide, please. So the building fee formula, the building permit fee formula really comprises three components. The first, the first component is to establish a building valuation of the project that's submitted to the city. From the building valuation, you plug that number into the proposed building fee table, and you'll get a building fee number. The, the third component is a plan review fee, which is typically a percentage of the building fee. And for the construction side, it's 65% the value of the building fee. You'll see later in the proposed table that there's a 50% mechanical and plumbing plan review. So those three components, building valuation, building fee, and plan review fee comprise what people typically call building permit fees. So let me walk through an example of this. Next slide, please. So I've just used a 2,800 square foot new single-family residence. There is a valuation table based in the International Code Council, which, by the way, the city has adopted by reference, and I'll mention that when we get to the next couple of slides or the next couple of documents. So you multiply that 2,800 square feet by the value of the construction in this table. It's $112.65 based on single-family residence and the quality or the type of construction. And working with your building official, most of the single-family homes are what are called a 5B. So that 2,800 square foot home gets a building valuation of $315,412. So you look at, you look up in the new and proposed building fee table, what the building permit calculates to. And there's basically graduated, graduated blocks of valuation. So up to the first $100,000 of valuation, it's $1,022 for the building fee. And then you multiply, then it's $5 for every $1,000 of value over the $100,000. So if you look at this, it's, you know, 315 minus the $100,000, it's your 215. So you multiply the 215 by the $5, that gives you 1,075. So the building fee is the base fee of 1,022 plus 1075, that gets you the 2,097. And then the plan review fee is that 65% of the building value. That gets you the 1,363.05. So you combine the building fee and the plan review fee, and the fee comes in at $3,460.05. That's an example of a single-family residence. I'll go to the next slide. Next slide, please. So this gets an example of an apartment complex. And then, working with your city staff, they've seen some apartment structures come in, you know, multiples. And in this case, it's 14,000 square feet of multifamily. There is a different construction type. It's a 5A construction type. So again, you multiply the 14,000 by the 106. You get a number that's 1,493. And the highest bracket you have in the proposed building fee table is $1 million, so it's 7,300. Then you discount the 493, so you get the 493 times $4 a square foot. And you'll see that there's the base fee of 73, 75, plus the 1972. That gets you the building fee of 9347. The plan review fee is 65% of that, and that's about six grand. So a building permit fee for a large multifamily complex would be about $15,000 in this case. So the next example I have is something for commercial construction. Next slide, please. And this is another 5A group construction. And this is a slightly smaller, at 12,000 square feet. And again, you walk through the numbers, and you get a building fee of 10,000, plan review fee of about 6,800. So the combined building permit fee is about $17,400 for new commercial construction. Now oftentimes with new commercial construction, that can be the shell building. And the first tenant that comes in and does 2,000 square foot tenant improvement, they would do an evaluation based on the tenant improvement, and there'd be subsequent permits for tenant improvement spaces. Those are the examples I have, and I want to just quickly walk through the next document. It gives you a snapshot, I think it's the next document, please. The Word document. Yeah, so the city already has in its code under chapter 1550, at section 030, an adoption by reference, the building code for the city of La Center. This is a snapshot of the building valuation data. And oftentimes, the, there's a, one lag, one cycle lag. So building codes are adopted every three years. So the 2018 code, you actually use the 2015 valuations. The 2021 code, you'll use the 2018 valuations. So this gives you an example of the different occupancy types down the first column. And then the other columns across the top are the type of construction about the, from the 1A to the 5B. So those are the numbers that you plug into your, into your system that generate the building value. So the next document, if you could, go to the, scroll down, please. I don't know if you can make this bigger. I can see it on my screen here, but, so this is, this is what we would propose that the city adopt as its, as its building fee table. And you'll see that there's the plan review fee of 65%. There is a minimum plan review fee. Any outside structural plan review fee would be at city cost. And that's something that, that you see frequently because most agencies even as large as like Clark County or Vancouver, they, they hire those out. There is a fee for any additional plan review over three. And so you, if you walk through this, you'll see that the, really the building valuations, they get down as, you know, as low as about $2,000 before you start getting to a base fee plus some increment that's multiplied per thousand. So if you scroll down a little bit more, you'll see that kind of in the heart of this, you'll see a lot of, you know, that you'll have, you know, between $25,001 and $50,000, there's a base fee of $372. And then $10 for anything over $25,000. In the case of a lot of your single-family residential, they're going to fall in that category of between $1,000, $100,001 and $500,000. A lot of the fees, a lot of the building fees are going to be, the base fee is going to be $1,022 plus whatever increment is over the $100,000. So that's, that's the way the building, that's the way the building fees line up. If you scroll down a little bit more, please. So the rest of these are, there is something that I worked with your building official about, and it is sometimes you'll want, especially on commercial and multifamily or industrial, people will want to do an early foundation permit. So this is structured that an early foundation permit could get started. They would pay 25% of the building fee value, and then they pay the balance of the fee as a permit issuance for the main foundation. There are some, this highlighted section, the base inspection cost per hour, and then I'll be working with Jeff and the finance director on in terms of the hourly rate. Right here, it's placeholder at 75. So any, any inspections outside of normal hours or re-inspections or any of these special inspections have an hourly rate with a, with a minimum. Those are that, that's that grouping of other inspections. Then the next grouping of fees are your mechanical fees. And by the way, that 25% of mechanical should read 50%. I've provided that, that new information to the mayor and Jeff and I believe the staff, so that should be 50% of mechanical. And then you get into, when the mechanical and then the rest of the fees on the next page, get into plumbing. These are based on, you know, how many fixture units you have, how many, you know, how much HVAC stuff you've got in your, in your structures. And there's a separate worksheet, a separate worksheet that an applicant fills out to calculate those fees. Scroll down a little bit more, please. You do have some of these kind of individual permits for heat pumps and wood stoves. And these are fairly in line with all the other agencies that we see permitting these kinds of, of devices. Scroll down a little bit more, please. Scroll down a little bit more. Then you get into your plumbing fees, which are, you know, $10.15 a piece. Keep scrolling down. So yeah, these are typical, your plumbing and mechanicals are between $5 and $15. And then for backflow prevention, you get into the number of devices and the size of backflow, backflow prevention devices you have. We do have a couple of other kind of miscellaneous fees for inspections of any public pools. Scroll down a little bit more. I think we get, come into the last page here. Then there's some miscellaneous fees for mobile home permits, temporary storage accessibility review for things like daycare centers and any adult family homes, change of occupancy, change of use, demo permit, moving permit. And then you get into some re-roof permits. If you scroll down one more time, I think we're going to be toward the end. So yeah, there's, there is some other permits, the permits for re-roof. There's something for temporary occupancy. And then you get into the Washington State Building Code Council surcharge of $25 on commercial project and $6.50 for a single-family. And $6.50 a base, plus if it's a multifamily, it's $2 for every unit over, over one. So those are the, what are called state building code charges. So that's, that's essentially what we're proposing, that the city consider for adopting. And working with Mr. Perry from your building department, he has been talking to the builders that, that are your frequent customers in the city and kind of alerting them to this change. And these are, these fees are very much like what you see in other agencies. In fact, I could give you some examples of what other agencies charge in terms of like a base plus. And we're at least in line or somewhat lower than a lot of the other agencies in Clark County. Especially when it comes to some of the, the plus. So in some places, it's like $7 for each thousand or $5.50 for each thousand instead of, you know, whole dollar amounts. So these fees are going to be very comparable to all the other cities, especially in North County cities and Clark County. So this should come as no surprise to the local builders in your community. And with that, I'll take any questions that the council or the mayor might have.
Marty, this is Dennis. Looking at these numbers versus what we have on the books today, do you have some kind of idea what percentage of increase it is overall?
Well, what you have on the books today is, you do have your ICC valuation table. But I believe the practice has been where a builder will state a value. And it's, it is somewhat arbitrary. There's no, there's no, there's no formula to it. So a builder will come in and say, I'm going to build this house and it's $300,000. Now you don't know if that $300,000 is a real number or an inflated or deflated number. So this, this fee table and using the ICC valuation table is, standardizes and makes consistent the fees that will be charged for builders.
Is that the same concept that's used by our neighboring cities, Woodland, Ridgefield and such?
It is, sir, it is.
Take that question a step further, Dennis. What about, you know, cities of the same comparable size and budgets? I mean, we're talking about 3,700 people here. So is this something that's adopted around the state with cities of the same size? Not just around our area?
Good question.
Yeah, when I looked, I actually polled, I polled all the other building fee tables from the smaller cities in Clark County. So Camas, Waschuggal, Battleground, Ridgefield, and they're all very comparable. And in fact, if, to give you an example, Waschuggal's fees, they have in their $100,000 to $500,000 range, their base fee is $993. And their, their fractional difference is $5.60 per thousand. And
Right, but they're also three or five times the size of us too.
In Battleground? In Battleground, it is, pull it up.
Can you put that chart up?
In Battleground, the, the valuation between that 100 and 500 is $1,100 plus $7.60 per thousand over any $100,000. So there's, there's a lot of similarity in the smaller cities.
Randy, can you put that chart, I'm sorry, Marty, I'm sorry, that chart up that you're, we're comparing it to?
Your chart or the chart I'm looking at?
The chart that's on your presentation.
Oh yes, I'm not, I'm not in control of that. You'll have to ask whoever, you're the clerk, there it is. Yeah.
Thanks for giving me that information, but I, I'm kind of going more along the same size of cities is what I was kind of going after. I get the neighboring cities around us, but you know, Waschuggal's almost 16,000 people in 2019. We're a town of 3,700, so my, the comp rates to me would be looking at other cities of 3,500 to 4,500 people.
Okay, so the best, the best local example is city about, the city of Ridgefield, which isn't too much, much larger than you. They have a $3,400 base fee. No, excuse me, they have $1,022 plus $5. So theirs is very similar to, in fact, it's the same as, it's the same as what we proposed here in, in the center. In fact, we've modeled a lot of the fee structure after the city of La Center, excuse me, the city of Ridgefield, knowing that, that the finance consultant that worked for city of Ridgefield, Mr. Lewis, also has worked for the city of La Center. A lot of the, a lot of the same modeling is done based on the city of Ridgefield's fee table. That's the closest example.
Marty, it is kind of going along the same line as Tom was asking there. With regards to these fees, is this going to attract or push away builders coming or wanting to build in our city?
I think that's a good, that's a good question. It's a valid question. Builders in your community are also building in Ridgefield and in Battleground and in rural Clark County. And they're going to see the same, if not slightly lesser fees in the center than they were, than they would elsewhere. So I think really there's more, there's more of a larger question in terms of other fees that there, that gets tacked onto a building fee. For example, your system development charges and your impact fees. If they are substantially, substantially different, and I say larger than other jurisdictions, then builders, you know, they make decisions. But my understanding is that your, your SDCs and your impact fees are not way out of whack where builders are staying away from the community.
Yeah, if I can just throw in here a little bit. I think that, you know, it's, in this case, it's more, more, the comparability is not between cities of similar size. Otherwise, you'd be comparing yourself to Goldendale, Washington, which is in a different county, different climate. I don't even know, in Goldendale, they plan under DMA, for example. So the, the more comparable analysis is done within the same market. So looking at the cities right around you because they have the same developers, the same builders and so forth.
That's a good point.
Yeah, that is a good point, Jeff.
So, so back to your, all these, these two or three pages of breakouts, Marty. Do we have those existing breakouts today in, in our city at this level?
So in this, in this document, I think if you scroll to the top of this document, it's the proposed, it's the proposed building fee table. So this first document, this very first document with the table, that, that's actually, this is adopted in the La Center municipal code under section 1550030. It's adopted by reference. And so you, you adopt by reference these building valuation data. What you do not have is the next table, which is the building fee table that generates the building fee and the plan review fee and the combined building permit fee. That's what you do not have in your city code today.
So how did we, prior to adoption of this proposed plan here, how are we coming up with the numbers?
I think it was left to the builder in their application form to state a value. And, and I'm not sure, you know, what the past practice was in terms of validating that number. But there might have been some, you know, some evaluation, but not through a tried and true kind of formulaic method that, that the Build International Code Council suggests.
Through the work that Marty did in the analysis of the department, this was one of the weaknesses that was identified that needed to be addressed really quickly. So, you know, even though we've had that, the, you know, valuation tables have been adopted in the code, for whatever reason, the, the practice had deviated from the codified prescribed practice. And so this is, this is making a correction to that and updating, updating some things still.
Would it be fair to say then, based on your comment, Jeff, and what Marty's presented here, that a builder who has been building in our area, which would be, we'll say Battleground, Ridgefield, La Center, could say in fact then that the, that La Center is an easier place to build because we don't have the detailed breakouts in our code versus what Ridgefield and Battleground has? Would that be, prior to this, work to the builder's advantage, do you think?
Yes, to the point of perhaps robbery and leaving money on the table. So, you know, I've thought like, oh, I missed my opportunity because I should have come up to La Center and built an $800,000 house and went to the city and told them it was going to be a $400,000 house. Because there was no validation or verification method there. It was just, you know, whatever I said as the applicant was gospel.
That, that, that makes sense. And I think you mentioned earlier that, of course, Jim Perry, our inspectors, worked in Ridgefield and other areas and is very knowledgeable. And did you indicate that he in fact has done some legwork speaking to some of our current builders? And the fact that he reacted to this?
That's my understanding, sir. We, we talked about what kind of, kind of outreach or, or public involvement we would engage in. And Jim is very familiar with and has, if not weekly, certainly, if not daily, certainly weekly interaction with the builders in your community. And he was going to be talking with them about, hey, we're, we're going to be adopting a new fee table. It's going to be very similar to what you see elsewhere in North County. Kind of, you know, kind of a heads up. Now the, to your, to your question, Mr. Hill, is, you know, a builder, you have, you have production builders in your community. They're going to be submitting the same building permit in Battleground or in Ridgefield or in North, in rural Clark County as they would in La Center. And it makes no sense that they would have wild variation of the building value of a 2,800 square foot home. So this, this fee table and, and using the formula standardizes the valuation of, especially some of the, kind of the production built homes that you see in your community.
I think that's, I think that's excellent. I think that's, I think that's excellent. I think that's, I think that's appropriate. I, I, I guess my first thought again, I, I like the idea that we're controlling it and we're being, and we're being, uh, competitive, I guess, uh, with our neighbors. And, uh, and so, uh, I would want us not, hopefully not lose that competitive edge, uh, to keep our builders and keep and drop builders to us. And it sounds like that, uh, for your, what Jeff, you've said and what you've said, Marty, that this is, this, this new, uh, approach here, more detailed approach, would not deter, uh, builders from coming here into our community.
Now, basically it standardizes us with the jurisdictions around us. And it's, you know, it's kind of funny, Jim Perry, when he started with the city, of course, he was with Ridgefield for a really long time and was with Clark County for a really long time before that. So, you know, Jim's been around the block. I'm going to say more than three or four times. And this was something he pointed out as a weakness. You know, here Ridgefield have been doing our, uh, plans review and building inspection for years, and now we have it in-house. And he was identifying this as one of the things that needed to change in our process. So it introduces a more objective approach for both the applicant and for the city and puts us on par with the jurisdictions right around us.
Right. I, I think a final question for me, I, I seem like I'm the only one asking questions. If we, if we go forward with this, which it sounds like it's the right thing to do, um, and downstream here, um, we started hearing from Jim Perry and and Tony and whoever else is in the office there, that, uh, we're getting hammered on, uh, certain aspects of this. Um, how difficult would it be for that, us to re- review that? Perhaps, uh, make some changes or adjust it or whatever. Is that a, a difficult process or is that something that, uh, we could do, uh, in a, in a reasonable period of time?
I think it, it's pretty straightforward, just like this process is. If we're hearing complaints and we would do some further evaluation, um, you know, the plan after this work session is to bring this back in two weeks for adoption at the regular meeting. And, uh, so if, if it needs to be amended in the future or revised, then we would simply go through this same sort of process that, hey, we've gotten this feedback. Well, you know, we validated the feedback, you know, it's not just complaining to complain, it's, you know, there's a valid issue there. So we're bringing these revisions back to you and we would probably do a workshop like this and go through them and then, uh, bring it to you at a hearing to adopt.
That sounds reasonable. I like that approach.
So Rick, oh, go ahead, Doug, sorry.
I'd like to throw my, my two cents, uh, worth in here. Um, I've just been listening and I've heard no reason why we should not move ahead with this. I know that historically, subjectivity has, has, uh, been an issue from time to time and, and, and this will make the process very objective. And I, I, I do like that. I like the idea of things, things being very standardized. The, um, the example Marty gave of, of a twenty-eight hundred square foot house, um, I don't know how many twenty-eight hundred square foot homes are being built in the center. There are some, but I think the average new one going in being built is probably between eighteen hundred square feet and maybe twenty-two hundred square feet. I would just like to, um, I would rest better knowing that a two thousand square foot house built in the center, production home, that is, it's a fee to be very competitive with, with our neighbors. And when I say neighbors, I mean Ridgefield, um, specifically. Uh, if it's not too much trouble for Marty to do this, I'd like to see a, a side-by-side comparison of, of a smaller production home, what the fees are in, in our city versus what they would be in, in Ridgefield.
I would second that.
Okay, what, I can do that real quick. You know how I can do that real quick? Is in that, in the proposed fee table, that, that, um, band of values between a hundred and five hundred thousand dollars is the same base fee of a thousand twenty-two plus the five dollars per thousand. So if you calculate a two hundred square foot, two hundred, a two thousand square foot home and the va- and the value of that home, if you go back to the table of, I gotta find it myself. To go back to the table of two hundred times, um, the R one, it's two hundred times, uh, I gotta find it, one twelve sixty-five, that's going to be about two hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand of value. So you're going to get the same number if you're going to build in the center or in Ridgefield. Because the, the base plus is the same.
The basis, okay. So the basis, the base is the same. Okay.
That base of, that, that hundred thousand to one hundred thousand dollar to five hundred thousand dollar on page two, it's the same thousand twenty-two plus five dollars over a hundred thousand dollars, per thousand over a hundred thousand. Does that make sense?
Yes, I see that now. Okay. Great. Yeah, thank you.
And let me just case in to add here that the complaints we get are not about the building and permit fees. The complaints that have the fee and development related sort of complaints that we get are around impact fees.
That'll be your big difference is what the La Center School District charges as compared to Ridgefield School District.
Yeah, traffic impact fee is higher. The, uh, you know, if you're going to build, uh, up in the area where the latecomers agreement applies and, you know, there's that issue to consider as well. So um, it's really, it's, the, the building is pretty much the same around, uh, La Center as other places. It's the, uh, the infrastructure piece is more challenging. Because we're smaller, we have less scale. And, uh, and frankly, our topography is really challenging. We're not, you know, flat battleground. We're hilly and treed and beautiful La Center. No knock on battleground.
The, the one thing I, I've talked to Sarah about because she's kind of your front line in the permit center, is I used to, I'll tell a short story here. I used to get all kinds of uh, grief from builders saying, whoa, my, my building permit fee is eighteen thousand dollars. How the heck could that be? So I, I told my staff that when you, when you print off a building permit, I want to see a pie chart. Because you can do this, you, you can, even through a spreadsheet, you can build a pie chart to say that, oh, this, this three thousand dollars is your building permit fee. The other eighteen thousand dollars is in traffic impact fee, park impact fee, school impact fee. And if you have any SDCs or latecomers agreement, it makes up the rest of that pie. So you can kind of, it's kind of like full transparency to your, to your builder that, hey, the building permit fee is just a sliver of, it's a small piece of the pie of this larger check that you're writing. It's, you know, it's, it sits and can do it. And I, and I think it's helpful to explain to builders that, that, you know, for full transparency, here's, here's the cost of doing business. So, any other questions? One thing that we've talked about is, is to collect data between the time this becomes effective and the end of the year to see how much revenue you've captured to cover the cost of the building department function. And that's when you can do kind of a mop, you can kind of, um, you can do what's called a multiplier. You can multi- you can do a multiplier that brings the number in line to cover your costs. And some, you know, some cities, uh, the cost of construction and the cost of building is, you know, building department is high, so you're actually having an inflated number. And sometimes you're over collecting and you can kind of deflate the number. And we're talking, you know, like, you know, a percent, two percent, three percent, something like that. But that's what you see sometimes in the building and some of the building fees across, you know, agencies. So we want to capture, um, I think it'll be, you know, eight months or so of, of revenue and, and then do a, a check-in at the end of the year.
I, I, I have another question. Uh, Jeff, you, you mentioned about, uh, and I think you did too, Marty, about impact fees. And I think, uh, you know, latecomers fees, uh, we got some pretty, uh, sizable, uh, mountains for some of our builders to climb over, uh, depending on what happens here at the junction and such. And I'm wondering, knowing that, and, um, that is obviously doesn't work to our advantage uh, in any stretch of the imagination, uh, that that's real. Those are, those happen to be real numbers and real impacts, um, not only on the city but on the builders. And so is it, is it something that perhaps we need to be sure we're looking at on the overall picture? Um, looking ahead that says, you know, we've done some things um, on behalf of the builders to hopefully, uh, entice them to come here and build or develop, or we've done some things knowing that uh, they've got some pretty good, uh, hills to climb over and some pretty good, uh, amount of dollars to put into the pie. Um, as you were saying there, Marty, uh, to make up that pie that, I think that's something, perhaps something that needs to be at least discussed and shared or thought about, uh, going forward. Knowing that we have that ahead of us and that's not going to go away, unfortunately.
The one thing that I can, the one response I'll, I'll, uh, provide is that one of the things that the city can do, and I think it does it well today, is provide the builder certainty and predictability and, and some speed. So when you have building permits that are submitted, don't sit on them to review them and, and issue them in kind of due time, you know? I think that, you know, there is a time value of money. So if you're, if you're consistently and predictably providing service to the builders and you're turning permits around in a reasonable timeframe and they can build, then they're not sitting on time and money. So that's one of the things that you can do for the building community is to provide that.
There's, so there's, you know, different perspectives on this. One is, you know, if you're the payer of all of these, uh, fees and charges and, uh, impact fees and system development charges, all that stuff, you know, you're writing a single check. If you're on the city end of that, you have all of these sequestered buckets that that goes into. And, you know, in municipal finance, one of the principal guiding issues is that one fund cannot benefit another. And so the plan review, building permitting, inspection activity, basically we need to charge fees that compensate the city for the services they provide in issuing those permits. And so that bucket needs to take care of itself. Our impact fees, same thing. You know, we, we have lots of empathy for the person that's writing that check that puts a little bit in all of those different buckets. Um, but we can't go, well, you know, they're going to have to pay whatever it is, ten thousand dollars in sewer impact fees, so let's cut them a break on the building fee. It doesn't, you just can't do that.
And yeah, yeah, that's a good point, Jeff, because that was going to be one of my questions, actually. Um, I, I kind of remember that when we were talking about these fees before and them not being able to make a big profit. It was supposed to cover costs in it. Um, uh, you know, I, I'm, I'm okay with, uh, setting the fees in motion if that's leaving money on the table, especially in an economy where we're, we're kind of hurting right now. Um, what I don't want to see is that we start pushing builders away from wanting to build here. I, I would love to hear from some of the builder's side of things. And, you know, another thought process of this is that no matter what fees we slap onto the builders and they pay, it still goes back to the consumer. The, the, they're the ones that will end up covering the costs.
Very good point.
Yeah, it does roll up into the price of what they're ultimately building and what they're selling it for.
So, Mr. Mayor, I, I think our, our hope is to to have the council come to a consensus that we can get this onto a regular meeting. I'm not sure as to your hearing requirements, but I'm prepared to uh, present again at a hearing either in two weeks' time or the beginning of April, whichever is your preference.
I don't think I have any council members that are, are opposed to moving forward with this on the, uh, the next city council meeting here, uh, this month. So, uh, if anybody does object to doing that, if you just let me know. But I, I think we pretty much understand that this needs to be incorporated.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with moving ahead with this.
I'm, I'm fine as well, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. And I appreciate it. I think it's, uh, it's the right thing to do.
Looks like your attorney popped online. He might want to have.
Yeah, it's just, in terms of the date, we'll, we'll need to look at, uh, getting, uh, notice published at ten days ahead of the hearing date. So, uh, whatever day we can make that work, we'll make it work as soon as we can.
Okay. Very good. Okay, any other, any other questions for, for Mr. Snell this evening or between the council members? Anything that you want to discuss about this, um, topic?
I think they were pretty well covered. And thank you for the information.
Okay, very good. Well, right now it's six twenty, so we will be starting our meeting, our city council meeting here in just ten minutes. So we'll just go ahead and, uh, we won't close out of this. If everybody could just, uh, mute their microphones and turn off their video, uh, we'll leave this, uh, meeting open.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, uh, thank you, sir. Thanks, Mr. Mayor and, and your staff. You've been very helpful along the way and Mr. Swanson as well.
You did good work, Marty. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Marty. Thank you, Jeff.
We'll talk to you later.
See everybody in about ten minutes.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, welcome everyone. Uh, today is Wednesday, March tenth, twenty twenty-one. I'd like to call this evening's virtual city council meeting to order. If we could all please stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
For which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, just as for all.
Should I have the roll call?
Councilmember Boff?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Councilmember Strobin?
Yes.
Councilmember Servini?
She is absent and excused.
Councilmember Hill?
Here.
And Mayor Thornton?
Present. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. If there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Shall move.
Then moved in second to approve the consent agenda. All favor say aye.
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 Close. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is citizens' public comment. Clerk, do we have any comments this evening for the council?
There are no comments.
Okay, thank you. So next on the agenda is the mayor's report. Uh, just two items this evening. Uh, first of all, reminder that we will be having our next city council retreat um, next Tuesday, uh, March eighth, and it will begin at five thirty PM. So, again, next Tuesday, we'll be having our second city council retreat. And the only other item I have is a reminder that my next, uh, mayor's town hall will be Tuesday, April sixth, and that will begin at five thirty PM. So there is a change in the date on that. It's not going to be on Wednesday. It will be on Tuesday, April sixth. And again, the mayor's town hall is open to anybody that wants to attend, and everybody is welcome. That's all I have this evening. The next item on the agenda is the attorney's report.
Good evening. Um, just very briefly, uh, an administrative matter. And that is that, um, in the work session, you might have heard me referring to published notice on ordinances. Sometimes state law specifies the type of notice that must be given for a particular type of action. Other times the state law is silent. Other times the state law is silent and our code may be silent as well. But sort of on an administrative level, what we've decided is that if there, if the state law is silent or if there's not a specific requirement in our code, what we're gonna start doing is providing 10 days published notice on agenda items that involve the adoption of an ordinance. So this is just to be consistent and transparent. Usually the adoption of an ordinance is something that's a significant council action. And so we, we decided to, to provide for at least a 10-day published notice. That's all I have here.
Okay, no, thank you for that and I appreciate you bringing that forward, Ronson. So yes, we will be following that policy going forward. Thank you.
Yep.
Any questions for the city attorney this evening, counsel? Hearing none, we'll move on to. Go ahead, Tom.
Sorry, Mayor, I was just telling, no, I'm sorry, I was just gonna tell him, thank you.
Okay. So next are council comments, council member Both.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I have just one, one real short item, and that is the, the monthly seat trans board of directors meeting, which would have been held last night, was, was canceled. I think I mentioned this at the, the previous council meeting. And the reason for the cancellation was that there were no action items to be taken up last night. So the next, the next meeting will be the, the April meeting. And that's all I've got.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
Thanks, Mayor. Only thing I have to say is nice to have some nice weather for a change, nice seeing people out walking around and hoping everybody is set up for their vaccinations. I know I get my second one here in another week. So anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, very good. Thank you. Uh, councilmember Strobin?
I have nothing to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Good. And councilmember Hill?
Thank you, Mayor, and welcome, welcome to our council members and citizens who are listening in this evening. I hope you'll enjoy the meetings. I hope you continue to log in and listen to our meetings. Mayor, I've got a couple of things just briefly to share with you and, and the council. I attended the virtual meeting of the Red Cross here this past week. It's their regional area conference. And just a couple of stats, it was only a half hour meeting, but just interesting stats here in our region. They've got 3,413 volunteers, particularly 650 in the southwest area, which is our area. And during 2020, over 45,000 people received a Red Cross training, which I thought was pretty substantial, pretty incredible based on the fact that we're doing it during a pandemic. And they also responded to over 650 local disasters in southwest Washington. And, and that also included part of Oregon as well. And then just another interesting note real quickly here regarding the wildfires that went on last year. As we know, particularly in, in Oregon, they served over 378,000 meals during that time of the fire. And they provided over 6,300 overnight stays to individuals and families during that, during the wildfire. So hats go off to all those that volunteer in the Red Cross. The other report I have briefly is I attended this evening, prior to our meeting, the Port of Richfield Commission. And just a couple of highlights. There's a lot of activity going on regarding broadband and they mentioned Senator Catwell. And she's the chair of the Commerce Committee in Washington. And they've put forward 100, $1.6 billion of federal money to help work with the, getting the broadband put in place throughout the country. And of course, Richfield is very, very active in that activity. Okay, so one of the other things that they're doing is, you know, is a, as a, most of you probably do know that the Port of Richfield, they build structures and they've, within the city of Richfield, that they in turn then rent, lease out to various companies. And that is continuing to grow and they're continuing to build. One of the latest is an organization called Hillbilly Brewing. And they're gonna be leasing one of the spaces, several thousand square foot facility owned by the Port of Richfield. Oh, and finally here, within Richfield, they've got an area called Wisdom Ridge, where they've actually built several buildings and some of those are now being occupied and they're still in the process of finalizing some of those buildings to be utilized by future tenants. But anyways, about 17 participants took place during this meeting, very active meeting, but a lot of time spent on broadband. They're very interested in that. Most of you probably have heard in prior discussions that when we put the sewer in up to the junction, we put conduit in that same hole where the sewer line is, several pieces of conduit. And then in future, some of that broadband will be able to go through there and actually reach the center and help us out in our community. So anyways, they're very busy and Mayor, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, staff reports. We have two staff reports this evening and the first one will be presented by Chief Richardson. Keith?
Hey, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, first one is obviously our monthly police advisory report for the month of February. And if you had an opportunity to look at, you can see we had the 17 reported crimes last month. Primarily, again, were vehicle prowls and thefts. We had to have one residential burglary. The residential burglary was a garage where perhaps their son was taking the traffic cans out and left the garage door open. So somebody went in the garage that night and stole some cash, some tools and a motorcycle. And then obviously the vehicle prowls, they're all unlocked vehicles. Some of them had cash taken, many of them had nothing taken, but they were ransacked. If you've never been, had this experience before, what generally happens is you can't find anything missing until sunshine comes out in summer, you reach for your sunglasses and they're not there anymore. So that's the kind of thing that generally happens. Or people take the spare change out of your ashtray, that kind of thing. So we did have the vehicle prowls, we had a trespass where some kids were in an abandoned house, two traffic crimes. One was a suspended license and the other was a hit and run. And then miscellaneous thefts, a trailer was stolen. Another one was some food where it was a grab and run at the gas station. And catalytic converters. And if you had a chance to read the report, we'll, we'll hit that part of it. But these were catalytic converters that were taken over a period of several months from school district vehicles that they were sitting because the school was out, they weren't driving. And so that's, that's the crimes that were reported this month. And we'll go to the next page. And obviously the, the next page is just something new that we listed. And what I did is we just listed where the primary property crimes were, so you get kind of an idea of, without the street addresses, but with the streets and the dates and times. And you could also, I did what's called a heat map below that. I'm gonna try to work on it, trying to get a little bit more detail. But where you see the yellow dot, that's the, that's where the intensity is of the crimes for this month and then all the other ones in the area. So what I did is I did this using some software and then we gave it to our patrol supervisors to give to our patrol officers, kind of giving them a visual idea and where they can drive around and, and I kind of see where, where the, that month's activity is. And we'll try to update it as much as we can, obviously at least minimally monthly, just kind of see what direction the people that are committing these acts are moving. And after the, the list of the property crimes and the heat map, we actually only have one arrest last month. That was the suspended license that I, I told you about. And then calls for service, we broke it again down to calls for service for January to February. We're just gonna add month by month, so you get an idea of how they're trending. And you can see that there, they went up a little bit in February and it was mostly officer-initiated activity that drove the increase because community initiative, calls for service actually dropped a little bit. And then below that, you had the opportunity to look with the month-to-month comparison. What did February 2020 look like to February 2021? And you can see again, February 2020 is pre-COVID. So, and then you go to 2021 and we're still having the impacts of pre-COVID, even though we recently opened up restaurants and things. So that's what's impacting total calls for service. And I anticipate that as things normalize and the weather gets better, things will kind of get back to where they were. But it will be nice to be able to kind of see, okay, what, how's it compared to last year, especially when we get into summer months? And then the next graph is basically just a, shows you where the reports are coming from, how many are officer-initiated versus how many are community initiated and also what the totals are for January and February. Because that's, that's really what drives some of our work is reporting. And then for public announcements, which is the next one, if you didn't know, Supreme Court back in February 25th, the state Supreme Court issued an opinion that basically says that civil possession of drugs, that law was unconstitutional. And it had to do with the fact that you could hold somebody, somebody could get arrested and prosecuted for unknowingly possessing the drugs. And that was kind of the case that this came from. This was a case where a young lady gets arrested, has some drugs in a pocket of her jeans and her argument was, well, these, these jeans I just got from somebody else. They gave them to me or I bought them and I didn't know the drugs were there. And so currently, any kind of controlled substance or illegal drugs or any kind of drug that's like a prescription, but it's somebody else's prescription, we're not prosecuting, we're not even arresting people for those right now. Nobody's prosecuting, prosecuting them. In fact, they're gonna have to go back and the prosecutor, prosecutor is gonna have to go back and undo a lot of these people that have been convicted of this crime. With that being said, this does not impact people that are arrested for possession for sales. So if you have scales and baggies and payo sheets and stuff like that and a large quantity of drugs, you're still gonna get prosecuted. But until the state legislators fix this law and there's talk that they may not, because there actually is some pending legislation that just decriminalize possession of drugs anyway, just like Oregon just did. So that's something you might hear about and that's, that's a statewide impact. So that's kind of where we are on that right now. And it will impact our, our city and it'll impact crime stats because a lot of our crimes that are reported to the state, there's three categories, crimes against persons, crimes against property, crimes against society, and drug offenses are in that crimes against society. So we're not making drug offenses arrest anymore because it's not illegal. Your crime rate will go down, hopefully, if it doesn't go up somewhere else. But I anticipate it's gonna go down. And then the last but not least, the, the next page, obviously we're trying to encourage citizens to continue to try to lock their vehicles to take away the opportunity that we have for people going in and rifling their cars. I have been talking to the chair of our police advisory coalition and perhaps they could help us with maybe some kind of flyers or something into the community where we can constantly reinforce the fact, hey, make it a lot easier on everybody if you lock your car. Because if you see the suspects on video sometimes and they come up in your driveway, they'll pull on the handles of the car. And if the car is locked, they're gonna go down, they're, they're not gonna break the, generally break the, the glass of the car in your driveway. They'll just go down to the next car they can find unlocked. So they're just rummaging around and lock cars. So that would help us. And then everybody always asks, well, why are they stealing catalytic converters? And I put this out because it is a nationwide problem. Anytime certain kinds of metals get expensive in the world, you'll actually see catalytic converter thefts go up. And when the prices drop down again, you'll see catalytic converter thefts go back down. And I, I've been around since catalytic converse started back in, I think around 1970, 75 or something. So with that being said, you know, you get six, some of the, some of the actual metals inside a catalytic converter get about $6,000 an ounce. So I don't know how many catalytic converters that would take to get that, but it's a pretty good price to get. So that's why they're doing it. They're very easy to remove and it's, it can even happen in the daytime. People crawl into cars in a parking lot of a shopping center and just cut them off. However, I did put in here that you can put your VIN number on a catalytic converter, have it engraved. And there are some products you can buy on the internet that you can actually bolt over the top of this catalytic converter to keep it from being removed by crooks. And obviously, the bad thing is, is, you know, people tear, take these off your car and then you're, you've got to go buy another one and they're, they can go, get up, you know, $2,000, $3,000. So pretty expensive. And so with that being said, I'd like to talk to you very briefly, unless anybody has any questions about what I just said. Okay?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions, actually. I, I do understand about the converters. It's definitely a problem. They're even coming in with jacks and jacking your car up and cutting them off. They did it to my office and hit six vehicles there. So I do understand that. Have we captured any of these people that are breaking into cars and such? That, this has been like this last four months or so, probably been the worst I've ever seen in the city in all the years I've been here. You know, at a time when you didn't have to lock your doors or have to worry about it. Don't get me wrong, that's probably not the right mental thought process of doing. But, you know, it's kind of new to me to, to see the crime happening in each of these neighborhoods now. So have we got any leads on these people?
The one lead that we did have that I just put out to patrol yesterday, some, one resident had a video, still video of a suspect, Zanel White with a shaved head and had a red bandana over his, his face because he was protecting himself from COVID, obviously. And so we have that, I put it out to patrol. I believe this citizen was gonna put it out on the center community page. But we need to do a better job of when we collect these videos and getting this, getting some still shots and getting them out to the community. So that's something I'm working on right now. And so hopefully, we get it in Battleground, hopefully it'll work here. The one thing about video, especially at night, is unless the guy has got really unique clothing on, it's really hard sometimes to identify people, but you'd be surprised. The Battleground Community Facebook page, which is not a city Facebook page, had about 25,000 people on it. So what would happen in our, when I worked in Battleground, is we would take pictures of suspects when we got them and put them out on the Facebook page. And our phone would ring off the wall and start saying, hey, that's Joe Blow, this is where he lives. So we're gonna do more of that, I think. I think it would be good, but that's really the only lead that I'm aware of right now that's pretty solid.
Okay, thank you. And then the other question I have, and it's actually very disturbing to me that we're not gonna prosecute people for possession of drugs anymore. And I did read that. So what you're telling me is that if a police officer pulls somebody over and sees substance sitting on the seat, but it's not seeing scales and baggies or any of that type of stuff, they're just gonna let them go?
Yes, we'll let them go. It gets even more complicated than that. You know, I'll tell you where a scenario is, because we had this problem when we legalized marijuana in the state. So I arrest you for drunk driving and I take you down to the jail and when they're taking all your property away from you, they find a bindle of cocaine. Well, that bindle of cocaine can't go into the jail facility because it's illegal. So what we have to do is we have to take that bindle of cocaine and then we had a big argument for months. Is that somebody's personal property? And we finally, you know, determined that no, it's illegal to, we're not gonna give any drugs back to people because we don't actually know what they are. They could be laced with something. So we give somebody their, their cocaine back and they take it, they're gonna die, you know, we're liable. So what we will do is we will take any drugs that we get in that kind of situation and we will take them back to the station and we'll book them for destruction. Now, that doesn't mean that somebody may not get clever and try to file a claim and say, hey, you destroyed my drugs and they were worth X amount of dollars that I paid for. And so you never know what could happen. But, so that's how convoluted these things get. And so, yes, as today, if we have somebody that has drugs, we will. If we have somebody that has drugs, we will not, unless they're under the influence, obviously, they're driving under the influence. It's different. But just mere possession is not illegal.
Wow, super surprising. Okay, thank you, Chief.
Okay. And then I'd like to talk about one other thing. This is police staffing. And I'm sure you're aware in the community that we have, we have an officer long-term deployment. He's going to be gone for a year. He won't be back till the spring of next year. And so we have, and we can't fill a possession, position. If somebody's on deployment, we can't fill behind them. And then we have officers, obviously they're in training or they're vacation or whatever it is. And we've gotten to the point now where we're going to have to start as the warmer months come and sunshine comes, people are going to want to have time off. And we also have people that are, are, you know, like any other department, going to look for other places to go because they may want, they may want to be a detective or they might want to be a motor officer or a school resource officer. And we don't have those positions. So they're going to go other places. So while all this is going on, we're kind of in flux with our staffing. So what I've arranged with the sheriff and with Washougal and also with Ridgefield and also with the guild, our guild is, if we have overtime available for our officers to work, they can work the overtime, but there's going to be more vacancies and more hours that our people could work safely. Because they, they already work a 12-hour shift. So you really can't, you know, work them 18 hours. They won't get any sleep at the other end. But just so you know, what we're going to do is, hey, we're going to go to the guild, say, here's all the overtime. We're going to try to forecast it out for a month. And then the overtime that they don't want, we're going to have contract officers from these other agencies come in and they will patrol the city limits of Le Center. And then we will just reimburse the county or Ridgefield or Washougal for the cost of that officer. It's called their contract rate. And so that's what we're going to do. If you, I just wanted to get it out there in case you see, wonder why, hey, I called the police at three o'clock in the morning and it was a Washougal officer. It's very common. We Battleground, we did it with Ridgefield when Ridgefield had vacancies. And Battleground helped us, helped us out last week when we had a vacancy. We couldn't find anybody. We all use the same dispatch center. We all use the same records reporting center. We all book into the same jail. So the processes that we all use are pretty standard throughout the county. So in reality, I, you, you won't really see a difference. It'll just be a guy with a different patch and a, a different logo on the police car. So does anybody have any questions about that?
They'll be using their own vehicles from there?
Yeah, the contract rate, they're in their uniforms, in their vehicles. We are going to give them access to our police department. So that way, if they need to use the restroom or write reports, they'll be able to do that. And then when they complete their reports, they'll just hit the, there's a, a selection on the report writing system. They'll check City of Le Center and their report will go into our record system and we'll process it. So that way, anything related to the follow-up investigation or stats, or we have to file in our Battleground Municipal Court, we'll take care of all that. So it's pretty seamless.
Oh, thanks. I'm sorry, I wanted to ask a question before, but my girlfriend drove up and the dog started barking. So the car prowls that we had, I'm on, I live on Seventeenth Circle. My neighbor's car was prowled. Mine were looked at, but they were locked. We have a pretty good picture of that car. Was that person, were we able to track that car down?
I have not. And I, and I will make sure, was that a Nissan or?
Yeah, I think it was reported to be a white Nissan.
Yeah. And it was, it was kind of, you know, a white Nissan was a little bit vague, but I'll make sure that we've done all we can on those. Just to make sure we have it farther. And, you know, I was hoping that our patrol guys would catch some, you know, somebody walking around at three o'clock in the morning with a red bandana over their face. Pretty noticeable. So I was hoping we could get something like that to try to catch somebody. Or hey, you go to the, the gas station at two o'clock in the morning and the guy's in there buying a beer. And he was where, he looks like the suspect. That's where we're going to find these people. So.
Okay. Well, great. Yeah. Because my neighbor had a good photo of Brandon Tuttle. His car was broken into. And opened. So, because he brought the pictures over and showed me. And wanted to get, try to get some more cameras here on the area. Then we have a Vancouver PD officer on the end of our cul-de-sac and he has a camera, but I don't think there was anything good on that one. But anyway, thank you.
I appreciate the questions. So I think I've covered everything in this first report. You want me to move on to the next one, Mayor?
Real quick, having a contracted police officer and them driving a non-Le Center police car and driving another city's police car. Is there anything that kind of, it kind of seems like it's convoluted as far as legal precedents where somebody sees, you know, I, and I'm going to be far fetched here, a Seattle police car sitting down here. They're like, hey, you're out of your jurisdiction. I'm not pulling over for you. You know, and a police chase ensues or something along those lines. I know you're smiling, but that, you know, people think like that. So.
They do. That's why I'm smiling. I, I had, I stopped somebody on the freeway once and they told me I couldn't drive them a ticket because I wasn't a highway patrolman. So I educated them on that. So, yes, there is the, I've, we, we have a statewide mutual aid agreement. So every, every department has agreements with every other department in the state. There's actually a master agreement that's at, at the Chiefs Association level that we all sign on to that allows our officers to do enforcement anywhere in the state of Washington. Now, where we, we have to look at something that's on my to-do list is what about municipal code violations that are unique to the city of Le Center? They're not, we don't have a lot of them and we don't do a whole lot of enforcement, but we, we're going to have to look at that because we will probably have to make sure that officers from outside the city, if they have to enforce an ordinance, could, but they also could just take a report and we could go by way of complaint and still solve the problem. And so there's, there's things that we can do, but yes, could somebody keep driving and not pull over? Absolutely. But again, you know, if it's, depending on what it's for, we don't chase people anymore like we used to in the old days. It's got to be a, a serious crime, violence, those kinds of things, or we just, or if it's not a drunk driver, but if they're just driving away and it's a, like a vehicle infraction, we just let people go.
Okay, thanks, Chief.
No, it's a good question. Thank you.
Okay. Any, any other questions for the chief before he moves on to his next report here? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. The, the last one, this has to do with the, the municipal court. And this came from Kay, who's the court administrator over in Battleground. And if you didn't know, there's a organization, a state organization that oversees all the courts in the state of Washington. It's called the Washington Administrative Office of Courts. And they're the ones that tack on all the penalty assessments. When you go to court and you're, all of a sudden, your hundred dollar ticket is 350 bucks. And those penalty assessments go to brain trauma, care. They, they have another one that goes to like the courts to run their computer systems statewide, those kinds of things. So we have to make a decision on whether we want these penalty assessments to be exclusive of the fine or inclusive. Which means, let's say I had a $250 fine. And if it's exclusive, when I go to pay that fine, I have to pay 105% penalty assessment. I actually going to pay another, another $262, which makes it about $512. If we say it's inclusive, then what happens? The state takes the penalties out of our fine. And then we get what, what's left over, which is generally nothing or a little bit. So most ordinances, and this was my understanding, talking to the prosecutor at Municipal Court in Battleground, is that they're, they tend to, if they're, the way they're written, unless they specifically say that the fine is inclusive, then the fine is exclusive. So we need to have a, just direction from the council. Do you want our fines to be exclusive? In other words, the offender pays the extra penalty? Or do you want them inclusive and we pay the penalty out of the fines and get what's left over? So I know it's kind of, kind of weird, but that's the way it is.
Well, I'm a habitual speeder, so I'll speak in on that one. Yeah, no, I, I believe that it's the offender that should be paying the full penalties, not, not the court system or the cities. I really do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would agree with that also.
Yeah, that makes sense to have the offender pay, you know, they did the deed, now they're going to pay for it.
Chief, on that, I also agree with that. But the question I have is, do most, most penalties have a, an add-on assessment?
Yes, most of them do. For, for everything, you can actually get on the AOC website. And they actually have a brochure there that explains how the fines are. And it's still not very clear, but it's like a pick list. If you get this violation, there's all these fees they have to tack on. And there's, there could be a lot of them. There could be seven or eight of them. So yes, it's very common to have a penalty assessment tacked on to a fine.
I think that, I think it's important. I, I, I agree, we should go with this concept. But I think, Chief, I would encourage you to come up with something perhaps for our citizens here. I was unaware of this and I would bet you the majority of our citizens in our city are aware of this concept or this process. It might be good to get something out. And Mayor, maybe just something that's something to think about. That might be something to put in our, our monthly newsletter or something. Maybe have the chief write something up on that. Just to make people aware of the fact that when people say, well, you're going to get a $200 fine for that. Well, bottom line is that $200 fine might be $465. So, so again, just being alert to the fact that stay out of trouble. Keep your speed down, Tom, right? Whatever. But I'd be something for us to consider getting the word out because that's a, that's a pretty significant jump in penalty.
That runs the state court system. So yeah, I, I agree with you. It's a big jump. Wow.
Now, this is Doug. If I may offer an opinion, it seemed to me that the offenders are already aware of, of the added assessment and those who have not created any, any offenses are the ones who are not aware of it.
Okay. Is there something that we have to vote in, or vote on or anything like that, Mayor?
I don't think we have to do that this evening, Bronson. I don't know if we're going to have to really adopt something by a resolution or ordinance, but.
Yeah, Mayor, I think we're going to need to do some code amendment to make it clear that the penalty is exclusive of the court assessments.
Okay. Okay, very good. Well, we'll get that scheduled for a future city council meeting then, in the near future. Very good. Okay, any other questions for Chief Richardson before we move on?
I'm good. Thank you for the report. Very thorough.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. So our next staff report this evening will be our Public Works Staff Report. And Public Works Director Matt Jenkins will be presenting. Matt?
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, Council, citizens. So I've got the March Public Works Staff Report. Starting with Public Works Operations and Streets and Facilities, annual maintenance and service. Those are being performed all through the city. Or I'm sorry, those are being performed on vehicles and equipment that the city owns. That's usually a pretty long process. We've got a number of pieces of equipment and vehicles. And usually these annuals take, they're, they're not just an oil change, they're a pretty thorough inspection. So we're in the March now, but we're, we're at the tail end of those. So I imagine those will be wrapped up this month. Right away mowing has begun. We're starting to get into the warmer weather and our snowstorm wouldn't really speak to that. But by and large, if you look at the, the aggregate of the ambient temperature, it's, it's starting to warm up and the grass is paying attention to that more than just the weak snow. So you guys are starting to have to mow more. Public Works continues to work on keeping the city properties maintained and the drainage systems clear throughout the city. That's always ongoing. And as always, the crew is continuously monitoring streets and repairing potholes throughout the city and looking for any other road hazards or areas that we can reduce risk. The community center play structures and restrooms throughout town remain closed due to COVID-19. Staff continues to monitor the situation in Clark County, but reopening likely will happen in Phase Three. That should be pretty soon, judging by the numbers. They're getting better every week. So fingers crossed on that. On parks and grounds, again, like the right of ways, mowing has begun in the parks again, just as temperatures warm up. Old starts to come back to life. The fence has been removed between Holly Park and the east of the Holly Park Trail. Staff decided that they were going to take that fence down for ease of access. And it was a recommendation actually by the lead, so we filed suit. The cedar tree above Heritage Park did not survive the snow and ice storm, unfortunately. The tree had to be removed after it fell down. I know there's been a lot of public outreach about trees being removed. We only remove trees if they are an imminent hazard or dying and there's the risk of contamination from, if they're diseased to other trees. So we're not, we're not in the habit of just cutting down healthy trees. So anybody listening that, that has seen that, you know, please know we're, we're not just chopping down trees for the fun of it. Staff has been repairing split rail fencing along the walking trails. There's a number of locations throughout town that that needs to be done. Battleground and Clark County work crews remain unavailable. Hopefully in Phase Three, we'll get those back. And just in time for the warm weather. And on the personnel side, currently all staff's working normal shifts. All appropriate safety precautions are being followed. And knock on wood, we haven't had any COVID outbreaks within that department. As far as projects go, Public Works will be expanding the parking area underneath the south side of the bridge, on the south side of the East Fork Lewis. And this area has received heavy use in the last year since we've done some modifications down there. But I think the citizens have responded to the work that we've done and they've really enjoyed that area. And so we're happy to see that. But we're going to continue to do work down there. It's from a cost benefit standpoint, it's, it's a lot of bang for the buck for the citizens. So we'll continue to work on that. As far as wastewater goes, in the operations side, the plant continues to run very well. The MPDS permit is being met well within its limits. Staff continues to optimize the plant as the weather continues to change. We see that, that ambient temperature go up. The biology is just going to change and it's a year-round modification they have to make and keep aware of. Bio, biosol shipments continue normal weekly deliveries, though ALNA will start sending an additional two loads per month in March. We'll have to monitor, monitor that pretty closely. It will, will put us towards the upper limits of our capacity. But there's an understanding there that if we get too close to capacity, we'll be able to shut down those loads and they'll have to go elsewhere. So we'll help, we'll help where we can, but we're not going to do it at a detriment to our own system. Operators have been working on reduce, on reducing the chemical needed to clean the NBRs during the winter by 50%. The first trial of that was very successful. And so we actually reduced the amount of sodium hypochloride that we've had to use by 55 gallons per NBR, which is significant because when you look at the degradation of the material of the NBRs, it's based primarily on how much chemical you clean them with over the lifecycle of that. So when we do actually replace those in, those membrane units, this is a formula that we're going to take forward with us and should give us even more extended life. So that's a big win. And staff actually ran that trial on their own and documented it. So I'm pretty proud of that. On the maintenance side, routine preventative maintenance is ongoing. We did have a blower fail. It was the NBR two blower, but that was due to a factory defect. We received a new one today and that was covered under warranty. Annual generator services throughout town have been completed, both for the wastewater treatment plant, Lift Station Three. But also we did City Hall and the Police Department generators. We did an assessment on those and those services will be forthcoming. On the administrative side, the March discharge monitoring report is complete and ready for submission. It was being compiled when I wrote this report. The annual biosol's report has been completed and submitted to Ecology. The SWACA biosol admission report has also been submitted. Waste load monitoring port is still currently being compiled. I imagine that'll be done in the next day or two. And then we'll have that submitted to Ecology as well. The due date on that is March 15th. And the SWACA air emissions inventory report will be submitted. will be submitted, well, today, and actually we did send that off today, so, and is what that is, is that's basically an emissions report for all of our generators, our burners in the open air, off-gassing basins that we have, and so we have to submit that annually to SWACA. Staff's currently working regular shifts at the treatment plant and in the sewer system, but maintaining social distancing practices, again, no COVID outbreaks down, down there, knock on wood, and as far as projects go, we're starting to work with our integrator, which is TAG, and that's the automation group, TAG is the acronym for their company, on a SCADA system upgrade, our SCADA system is out of tags, and when the lift station for the new middle school comes online, we won't have any more tags to assign data to. So we're working on implementing that system here in the next few months, so that, the goal is completion by July. On the building department side, permitting and construction are still progressing at a strong rate, we had a little bit of a lull initially, but you know, due to weather and the snowstorm, but it's, it's back up and moving. The building officials conducting a number of inspections again, 12 to 15 stops per day, I think he had 20 yesterday, and that results in about 20 to 40 inspections per day, because each stop has multiple inspections. Single-family residential plan review times are currently two weeks, in the, in the earlier council workshop Marty spoke to this, we're turning plans around in two weeks, and that includes the three to five days in quarantine, that we don't touch the plans after we receive them, so that's pretty exceptional, my hats off to that, to that group, they've just continued to crank out the work. Staff has taken in 18 single-family building permit applications since January 1st, and that, I believe we'll probably see a uptick in the next few months with that as well, inspections for the Lassiter Middle School are continuing to increase, and will continue to increase, we're starting to get into the point now where more and more of what they complete needs to be inspected by Jim Perry. The Minute Management Hotel plans are currently under review, and I believe those will be back, I would think, next week. Timberland apartment plans are, they've been technically approved, and Jim should be signing those if he hasn't already, I would imagine this week. And staff are working modified shifts still because of COVID-19, and the office remains closed to public without an appointment. Staff should, should return to normal, I put will, but I put it, I should have put, sorry, the mental space there, I put will, but I, I should have put May, return to normal, and on March 22nd, if the COVID-19 numbers for the region continue to improve. On the stormwater side, Clark County staff are working with Lassiter staff on drafting an inter-local agreement, which will come across your guys' desk here pretty soon, to conduct MST testing in order to identify possible bacterial sources and infiltrating the stormwater system. And as what MST testing is, is it's actually, looks for DNA markers, so we can tell if it comes from human, dog, livestock, chickens, any warm-blooded mammal will be able to trace what it's from, but we've gotta select the markers, it is somewhat expensive, but I think it's pretty invaluable at this point, in helping reduce any bacterial loading in our streams, so that's all I have, are there any questions?
Yeah, actually, Matt, great report, by the way. These 20 to 40 inspections per day, is this, is this realistic for one inspector to be able to accomplish on a regular basis?
I would say a normal inspector, probably not, Jim Perry's exceptional, he's been, he's been doing this for 25 years. He's got a system down, and I do pay attention to his workload, we do talk about that, and part of that plays into the fees from the workshop, and what, what our future growth is gonna look like. But right now, he has it managed and under control, and I, I do pay attention to what he tells me.
Okay. The, the park, I do wanna tell you, you guys, you guys hit a home run with that, I, I see a lot of people up there and enjoying it and having a good time. Yeah, I think what you guys have done is wonderful there, it gives a, a nice place for people to, to spend their days, especially during the, the last year, so. Congrats on that.
Thank you for that, and I give full credit to that, to Dave Pettit, that was his idea. He came up with a, a cost analysis, and we took a look at it, and he made it happen, so Dave Pettit was one to thank, for sure, thank you.
I'm Doug here. I just wanna echo what Councilmember Strobin said, it's an excellent report, and it's very obvious to me that you're a very busy guy, so thanks for your efforts, and, and to your whole team as well, thank you.
My pleasure, thank you.
Matt, this, this Randy, and I'll echo this, great report, did you say that the playground is still closed?
It is, yes, we, so we, we were caution taping that off, but as what we found, his parents were tearing the caution tape off, we actually saw it on camera. And so we got to the point where we, we noticed it, but if people are gonna allow their children to play on it, we can't really stop them.
Yeah, I, I drove by today, there was multiple families in there.
Yeah, so it's, you know, from a liability standpoint, we're, we're not gonna open it because we can't, we can't sanitize it to the level that we think that we're comfortable with for liability, but it's essentially play your own risk.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Matt, Dennis here, Matt, I guess I get echoing Councilman Strobin, and as well as Doug and Randy, but one of the things I really appreciate on your reports is the fact that not all the time, but there are times where I get questions from citizens asking about different things going on in the city, and I think your report being as thorough as it is always gonna give us a really, a good view of really what is happening in real time. And, and I think that's appreciated, and I appreciate the amount of detail, I know that's a lot of work on your part, and just today, this, just your reporting, sounds like this past week or next week or two here, eight or 10 different reports going to who knows where, including Ecology, but of course, I know your secretary takes care of all of that for you, but that being said, no, but again, thanks again, and great job, appreciate it.
Oh, thank you very much, I appreciate that very much. Okay, well, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Matt, so if there's no other questions for Mr. Jenkins, we'll move on. Very good. So next, on the agenda this evening, we do have two ordinances that'll be presented to the council and public hearings. The first one is a variance code update, and Contract City Planner, Mr. Ethan Spuh, will be presenting this to the council. Ethan?
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, Council, hope you can hear me okay's, am I coming through?
You're good.
Great. So, staff and Planning Commission are continuing their diligent work to update the development code. So there was a number of updates we brought to you last year, into the beginning of this year, in, in January, we were talking about the new ADU code with you. And so we're gonna continue doing that throughout 2021, as staff in the Planning Commission identify issues in the code that need to be resolved, and, and improvements that, that need to be made. So tonight, we're talking to you about an update to the city's variance code, and specifically the variance criteria. If you're not already aware what a variance is, I mean, I think everyone's sort of familiar with, generally familiar with what a variance is, but it's essentially a way that an applicant can request to deviate from the standards that are in the code, because they have some sort of unusual circumstance, that's not, not typical of properties or, or other uses in that zone. And an unusual circumstance can include something that's unusual about the site itself, maybe it's the, the size of the site, or some of the characteristics of the site, such as, you know, it might have slopes or wetlands, or something that make it difficult to comply with certain standards in the code, or it might be something that's unusual about the proposed use itself, that's, that's not typical, that's creating, you know, a situation where maybe the code didn't really anticipate that type of a, type of a use, and, and makes it difficult or impossible to meet, meet the standards. So, common variances that the city sees quite a bit are variances for setbacks, or, and, and one really frequent one is a variance for maximum building coverage in the city's low-density residential zone, and so the way that this, this particular update and this discussion about the city's variance code came about was in discussion with the Planning Commissions, about, about the planning, with the Planning Commission about the ADU code, and there was some concern expressed by the Planning Commission at that time, that somebody might be able to propose an ADU that was either smaller or much larger than the, than the ADU ordinance would allow, and, and claim that that particular use, that particular situation was unusual because accessory dwelling units are unusual in Lassiter, and so therefore a variance should be approved. And, and so that was part of the discussion we had with Planning Commission about beefing up the variance criteria. And in addition to that, one of the other reasons that this came about was just that, you know, staff has noticed that the variance criteria are relatively few in comparison with other jurisdictions, and so in our work, in our, in our work with other jurisdictions, you're, we're familiar with more robust variance criteria, and we thought that that could benefit the city. You know, having, having only two variance criteria like the code currently does, in some ways kind of undermines the development code, because it makes it really easy for people to vary from the code, and then those standards become hard to, to live by and, and enforce. So, based on that, staff and the Planning Commission felt that it would be beneficial to the city to update the variance criteria to ensure that the situations that come before the city are truly unusual circumstances, and not things that were the applicants simply just wanting to, not wanting to comply with the code. So, in the staff report, a clerk, if you'll scroll down to the next page, I put a couple of examples in there, you may have had a chance to read them. The first example was, was something recent that happened where an applicant purchased a couple of lots zoned for low-density residential use, LDR 7.5, and their intent was to put duplexes on both of those lots, however, one of the lots was less than 10,000 square feet, and the code says that you have to have a minimum of 10,000 square feet to put a duplex on, 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 on that lot in, in that zone. And so, in that case, the applicant argued that variant, excuse me, that duplexes are uncommon, unusual in Lassiter, and even though they didn't have the adequate lot size, that they should be allowed to have that duplex. And so, you know, in staff's opinion, in that situation, that wasn't really an unusual circumstance, because it was something that the applicant, that, that was generated from the applicant's desire to have that duplex, in other, in other words, a situation that they created versus simply compliant, being able to comply with the code and propose a single-family unit on that lot. Another example, also recently was a four-plex, a string of townhomes that, that was being reviewed, and the applicant, the, the code says that you have to have three parking spaces for each residential unit. In, in one section of the code, in the off-street parking section of the code, and then in another section of the code, it says that you have to have 1.75 parking spaces per unit, so there's an internal conflict there in the code, something that we're gonna also be fixing this year, however, if the applicant wanted to, or, or was going to comply with the three parking spaces per unit as, as staff interprets that they would, would have needed to, they would, in that case, have had to add more driveway space, made the driveways either longer, or, or wider, or both, and then that, in turn, would have caused them to exceed the maximum building coverage standard, so by complying with one standard, they would be then violating another standard, and so in that case, staff felt that they did have an unusual circumstance, which was those conflicting, those standards in the code that were, were leading to a conflict. So in those couple of cases there, you know, those are illustrating instances in which it would be, would have been great if staff had had additional variance criteria to highlight, you know, number one, that a variance shouldn't be something granted for something that is a situation that's created by an applicant, and number two, that an unusual circumstance could include a requirement under another code section, or another state or federal requirement that's leading to the, to that situation. So, clerk, if you could scroll down to Exhibit A after the ordinance. Yeah, keep going down, after the ordinance here. Yeah, thank you. So, these are the revised variance criteria. We've kept the old criteria in here, slightly modified. Number one is the existing criteria that we've modified to specify that an unusual circumstance could also include another obligation under a different municipal code section, or a state or federal requirement, that's the one I just spoke about, that's been tacked on to the unusual circumstance criterion. And then the other criterion that's, that carries over from the existing code, that would carry over from the existing code is number six, that granting the variance will not be materially, materially detrimental to the public welfare, or injurious to the property or improvements in the vicinity and zone in which the property is situated, and then the other, the, the new criteria are numbers two, three, four, five, two, three, four, and five, that the unusual circumstance cannot be a result of actions taken by the applicant, in other words, something they just, they, they just wanted that was creating, leading to the need for the variance. Number three, that the variance request is necessary for the preservation of a substantial property right of the applicant, which is possessed by the owners of other properties in the vicinity or zone. And four, the variance request is the least necessary to relieve unusual circumstance or conditions, so they're not asking for extra, just because they know they need a small amount of variance, they're asking for a larger variance. And then finally, five, that any impacts resulting from the variance are mitigated. So, these are pretty common variance criteria that you'll see in jurisdictions all around the state, really, but we did some research on that, especially focusing on Clark County, so these are pretty typical variance criteria. So, our recommendation then for you tonight is to approve the proposed changes to the variance criteria. And so with that, I'll take any questions that, that you have on, on this new code that we're proposing and the ordinance.
Ethan, Doug here, can we go back to, I think there was a list of five different criteria. I think it was number three, got my, got my attention, it's not on the screen now.
Yeah.
Maybe I can scroll to it.
Think the clerk's bringing it up here.
Thank you, yeah, one, number three, yeah, where it says the variance request is necessary for the preservation of a substantial property right of the applicant, which is possessed by the owners of other properties in the vicinity. What if we got into a grandfathering situation where these other, the, the other residents are the property owners? or the property owners have got some set of standards? And the code is then changed. Can an applicant in this case request a variance to to match the grandfather clause? Or is that, do you see that as a possible issue?
You know, I don't believe that that would meet this criterion because the the other properties in the zone don't have those property rights. They may, they may have been grandfathered from their existing use or or structure, what have you, but they don't have, but they don't have those property rights now under the new code. So I wouldn't see that that would be, that that would meet number three here.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to get your thoughts on on that one. Yeah, thank you.
So any other questions from the council for Ethan this evening before I open up for the public hearing or discussion amongst yourselves?
I think it's a pretty, it's pretty self explanatory. I think the planning commission and Ethan, those guys, you guys did a great job on it.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is a public hearing. I will, it's right now 7:35. I will open it up to the public. If anybody would like to make any comments on this ordinance, if you please give us your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, not hearing anyone wanting to make a public comment. I will close the public public comment period and turn it back over to council for any other discussion, questions, comments. If there are no other questions, if I could get a motion.
Mayor, I I move to approve, a move to adopt ordinance 2021-03, amending La Center Municipal Code, Chapter 18.260.040, variance approval criteria.
My second motion.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance 2021-03, amending La Center Municipal Code, 1826.40, variance approval criteria. This is an ordinance, so if I could get a roll call of vote, please.
Councilmember Baugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
Yes.
Councilmember, I apologize, do I skip Liz? Oh, Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries to approve ordinance number 2021-03. Thank you very much, Ethan. Great presentation. I appreciate it.
Thank you, council.
Great job, thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we do have a Title 15 code update, and Mr. Matt Jenkins will be presenting to the council.
Again, council, mayor, citizens. So I have the ordinance to adopt Washington State Building Specialty Codes. To give you a little background on it, the Washington State Building Code Council is a state agency created by the legislature to provide independent analysis and objective advice to the legislature and governor's office on state building code matters. Currently, the city of La Center has in place the 2015 State Building Code that was previously adopted by the Washington Building Code Council. The Washington Building Code Council adopted the 2018 State Building Codes and by emergency rule provided for an effective date of July 1, 2021. However, Governor Inslee on January 18 of 2021 ordered the council to rescind its emergency rule and make the 2018 State Building Codes implemented implementation date February 1, 2021. In order to comply with Governor Inslee's council requirements for implementation, the state will, the city will implement the 2018 State Building Codes on February 1, 2021, along with our local jurisdiction adoptions, which are specialty codes. Staff's recommendation is the adoption of the ordinance. And for for city council to amend section 15.05.030, reference of the building code and specialty codes as the La Center Building Code of the La Center Municipal Code. And that's all I have. It's realistically the state's force and everybody does 2015, 2018. And then in terms, we we have to do local jurisdictional exemptions and and actually implement the things that fit our jurisdiction as well. So that's, that's what we're looking at here.
It it seemed, I think I remember when I was in California during hospital work, we're always three years behind on the code. The building codes that we used, because you're always wanting to get your permits in before the next code yet, so you could, you know, avoid something, maybe. This is kind of a slam dunk.
Yeah.
I move to authorize the mayor to sign it.
It's a public hearing, Randy, so I still have to have a public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just get through that part, yep.
Get through it.
So if, are there any other comments or questions from the council before I open up the public hearing?
Matt, Matt, this is Dennis, just a question. Are these changes significant?
To answer your question, mostly no. But when you look at the energy code that's being implemented, yes, there was actually an article in the Columbian. It can, it can affect the cost of a single family residence from between $10,000 and $20,000 just based on the energy code update alone. But again, that's, that's on the state level. There's really no way around it for us.
But that's, that's the most elegant piece is the is the energy issue?
Yeah, yeah, there's the, a number of, a number of things. You know, the the primary thing is they're looking at phasing out natural gas appliances, going more towards back to electric. There's, there's also, not to get too far in the weeds here, but there's also this first or bouncing. They don't want paid for air leaking out of the house, but they don't want unpaid for air leaking into the house. So you have to have a bounce and in larger homes that that actually takes equipment and a system. So there's, there's a pretty, pretty significant and complicated form of it. And a lot of builders are actually struggling with it right now to to make this work. But again, that's at the state level. That's out of, out of our control.
And and how do we, how do we get away with implementing this in April versus now?
I guess we'll jump in there a little bit and help you out, Matt. I think Governor Inslee, quite candidly, did something that I thought was pretty odd, where the the building council or the code council had issued an order that put off the implementation of the 2018 code until July 1. And then Governor Inslee rescinded that order and said that you have to implement the new code in 13 days, which is legally impossible for a city like ours. To 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 adopt the new code, we have to hold a public hearing. We have to give a notice of that public hearing. Our ordinance doesn't go into effect till 30 days after adoption by council. So how do we get away with it? Well, we comply with the law that applies to us. And what Governor Inslee ordered by adopting or implementing by February 1 was simply legally impossible. So I looked at what other cities were doing, and it's very similar to what we're doing. And that is they're adopting as soon as they reasonably can, mid-March to mid-April, and that's what we're doing.
Thanks, thank you. That answers my question.
Hey Bronson, real quick, what, what, you know, just out of curiosity, what happens if we decide not to adopt this? If we're against that? I I'm kind of confused here by somebody decreeing that we need to do this at a certain date now, and we're over here talking about it now. So I I just was wondering what happens?
Sure. So timing is one thing, and I've addressed the timing issue. State law does require that we adopt in our International Code Council building codes. And we we are allowed to make certain amendments to that code. And in this ordinance, we do set out a number of amendments, but our amendments cannot be less protective of the public than the state code. So our hands are tied in terms of, you know, are we going to try and make a less energy efficient code? We legally can't do that.
Well, I I'm just trying to figure out what I'm actually voting on then. If this is something that we have to pass, why, why is there a vote? I mean, that's where I'm really confused at.
Right, so essentially, the ordinance sets out a number of amendments. You're right, you you don't have a lot of choice in that. You have to adopt the state building code with our amendments that don't weaken the code, but do make some local adjustments.
Well, if I may offer an opinion, I'll offer an opinion here. You know, it's, we we know that this will add to the cost of housing. And it comes at a time when that's that affordable housing is a topic in itself. It's a very, very current topic. It's been around for some time. It's not going to go away for for a long time either. And yet we're building more costs into into housing.
And then you know what, Doug, on what our workshop was, and we're adding more costs. So all the way around, the costs are just rising like crazy. So, yeah, it's kind of disturbing.
Any other questions for either Matt or Bronson this evening before I open up the public hearing? You're not hearing any questions? It's right now 7:46. I'll open up the public hearing. If anyone would like to comment on this ordinance, if you please give us your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. Okay, not hearing anyone wanting to make a public comment. And I will close the public hearing and turn it back over to the council for any further questions, comments, discussion. If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, so I move to authorize to, let me start over again. I move to authorize the mayor to sign ordinance 2021-02, adopting the Washington State Building Specialty Codes, including the state adopted amendments.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, authorized the mayor to sign ordinance 2021-02, adopting the Washington State Building and Specialty Code, including state adopted amendments. Again, this is an ordinance. Could I get a roll call of vote, please?
Councilmember Baugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
I'm staying.
Councilmember Hill?
You're muted, Dennis.
You're muted.
Yes. Sorry about that.
Motion carries to approve.
Mayor, can I ask Bronson a question? On the, on the recommendation motion line, adopting the Washington State Building Specialty Code, should it specify which year code that is?
Yeah, actually, the the ordinance does specify the year of the code.
Okay, I just want to make sure because it it changes year to year to year. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Bronson. Thank you, Matt. Okay, next on the agenda, we do have an executive session this evening to discuss potential litigation with legal counsel. The executive session should last no more than 15 minutes. So it's right now 7:50. I would say we'll be back by 8:05. I'm going to ask the council to leave this meeting. You have been sent a, or leave this meeting room. And then we will enter into the meeting room that will have our executive session. And we finish, we will come back to this meeting.
Can somebody send me that link because it's disappeared off my computer? Unless I, maybe I trashed.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay. It's now 8:35. City council has just come out of executive session. We're back into general session. We did have session after a discussion and the executive session. Is there a motion from the council?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move to authorize mayor to sign a resignation agreement between the city of La Center, Washington, Lydia Fowler, and the La Center Civil Police Association.
I second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to prove the, to prove and authorize the mayor to sign the resignation agreement between the city, Lydia Fowler, and the La Center Civil Police Officers Association. Clerk, could I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Baugh?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Strobin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously. You counsel. We have one other agenda item this evening, and that's to, a motion to adjourn.
I so move.
Second.
They've moved the second adjourn the meeting, adjourn the meeting. All favor say aye.
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 Posed. Motion carries. Thank you, council. Have a great one.
Okay, good night.
Talk to you soon. Thanks, Bronson.